Plus the years and much more.
All right. Public hearing order, please join us with flags, leaders.
Flags, leaders to the United States of America. And to the Republic where which is dance. My nation, under God, is merciful with liberty and justice for all.
They need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Next. Approve the minutes of the March thirty first, twenty twenty five regular meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Who claims filed county auditor for two hundred twenty two thousand, four hundred twenty four dollars and sixty eight cents.
So moved.
Okay.
On favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Prove employee claims filed county auditor for seventeen hundred eighty two dollars and sixty six cents.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Who approved monthly fund balances and departmental reports.
So moved.
Okay.
On favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Prove a home occupation permit for Heather Sickles.
I'll make the motion.
You guys want any presentation information?
Yeah.
That?
Thanks.
Sure if you guys are familiar with where it's posted. Well, this one's just in Otterville. So the red outlined area is an already established accessory structure um that they're looking to obtain this variety store out of. Um. As far as what they're going to be doing, um. They're currently buying like those storage lockers or storage units that people default on and then we'll go through the next of items out of that location. Um, they already have a party on site, so um any concerns for that are very, very minimal.
What's the parking situation up there? I'm familiar with that lot.
Yeah.
I know it's a large lot.
They've, um, their original intent, I believe, is just to have all the traffic come up from here. They own this entire section, so they're pretty lenient, I would say, if there's a large crowd of for people to come in for.
Parking on grass or whatever.
Yeah, yep. Yep. And then um they did mention too, if you guys had any concerns with this road access that they would see about getting access on to the main street. Um, I felt keeping it over here would be a little bit better, less traffic that way. Um, but they were open to that as well. If you guys had any concerns.
And as far as neighbors, they haven't uh expressed any concerns or anything?
Um, so it's kind of at my discretion in a way um to have this as like a so neighbors are notified. I feel that it's very minimal. Um, and I did tell them again that if things progressed, you know, within a year, then we'll definitely need to look at the resources. For sure.
Right now they're just kind of figuring out if it's gonna work.
Correct. Yep. Yeah. So that's just something that we kind of offer um just to start off as that home permit and see how things go from there.
Any other questions? Got a motion. Do we need a second?
That's what I can do.
All in favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Thank you. Monthly report from the quarters office, seventeen thousand, two hundred and four dollars and four cents.
So this would be the licensing and um.
That's true.
Absolutely.
No, oh, that's for, oh, yeah, from those and I think she has some recordings in there, that electronic recordings.
Like what it's supposed to do.
Yeah. Lot of electronic recording recordings and titles for SUV boats, statistic, vital statistics, all that good stuff.
Untitled.
This will be a busy month.
Make a motion.
Second.
All favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Prove the quarterly report for the auditor's office for hundred and twenty five thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars.
Just did you want to go over that? But it's not all money that just goes into the auditor fund for my department. Okay, so we had four thousand nine hundred or four thousand ninety five dollars in passport fees, um plat books, hundred and sixty eight, border lists, when somebody comes in or requested list, we charge ten dollars. So that came to four thousand, two hundred and seventy three dollars. The other funding was for contract law enforcement for twenty seven thousand, one fifty eight, fifty. And then also rent of county land for ninety three thousand, eight hundred, eighty seven dollars and fifty cents. So those two funds, they go, they correlate with what department they go to. It's just that it goes on my report because it's coming in from my office and we received it. Any questions? Good to meet.
Yeah, motion second.
So moved.
Seconds. All favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Prove monthly employee health fund report. That's what's included about me right now.
Back to you.
We'll see on two forty four then. Then we'll look like.
Yeah, two point four, six, eight, seven, one, two is where we're at. Um, we were up a little bit this month in claims, but it always seems.
Four hundred thousand.
Yeah, always seems to balance itself out, so.
And love. So this is our fund report.
So weekly I get a report from Walmart and I um basically do a transfer to pay the claims. The county contribution, we deposit that every two weeks once payroll is done. It's in a completely separate account from all the other funds with the county.
I need a motion to approve the monthly employee health fund report.
Make the motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aight.
Next. Next items for discussion, place on file following manure management plan. Jeremy Riley, Byron Township, section eleven.
That's the same one that you guys approved a few weeks ago, approve the master, master matrix. And so now it's been processed and it's just FYI from the DNR that it's all complete, everything's completed.
I'll make a motion to place that on. I don't.
Second.
All favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Okay. Got some time here.
Do you want to do, want to go over um capital projects? I sent you guys a um email that Anne had put together regarding what we've spent so far for this fiscal year for capital projects. We originally had budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand. At this point, we've only spent fifty eight thousand, one hundred and eighty three. So some of those projects that were suggested when we did the budget a year ago, we need to get moving on those to get them completed by this fiscal year.
Mm hmm.
So uh the bills can be paid in June. Otherwise, if we don't spend it, it goes into the fund balance.
I said to, if you and Juan, first, the ones that we had talked about, you want another copy of that?
No, obviously.
Got it.
So basically, this, this is just an FYI that we need to get moving on this if we're gonna utilize especially you like it, and also the one with carpet and things like that, because it will take a process to get the bids, to tear things out and redo them.
Yes. Do need to get moving on that.
Do we need to decide which products were, were approved in here or you just would blanket it in or?
Uh, we need to get the carpet done because the whole, we have holes in the carpet.
Yeah.
In the assessor's office, under the desks.
Assessor coming in next week. Be nice to get the carpet for it.
Yeah. And get rid of the ugly red.
I'm kind of blind, I don't notice.
So on that list, was that, um, I didn't print it, I'm sorry. Are we still talking juvenile court also?
Yeah, but juvenile court and the assessor's office. And.
See the, the roof repair, is that still done?
Um.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, it seems like a big one.
That.
Well.
Person that was supposed to come look at it, have we, has he been here, or I should say he? Has the company been here?
I don't believe so. They were gonna try and do it when the ground froze over and then they never
That's.
Showed up back. That is back in December.
Correct.
I'll follow up.
I mean, the roof repair, the asbestos treatment or asbestos removal, that, that seems real important.
That was um.
Well, actually, a roof repair is for DHS test building.
Oh, I get one on the courthouse. I must be look at the, the elder list, the redacted list. That Anne sent out. Let me find your email.
That is what money has been, this, that's money just been spent. This is money that's been spent.
Thank you.
Good. You.
Well, and another thing to take into consideration is with the molding room upstairs that we recently discovered that will probably should take a priority of cleanup and fixing and that could come out of capital projects also.
Um, I think that's probably gonna end up being an insurance claim.
Okay. Well, our deductible's ten grand.
So. Because they were talking, and we mitigate that mold, they're gonna have to take all of the law coverings off, the floor out.
Mm hmm.
Can be quite extensive. So I don't know. I guess if it's over ten thousand, then we turn into insurance and if it's under, we pay for that at capital projects.
Just for everybody's knowledge, we had a room upstairs on the top floor in the old jail area that court services uses to store documents and files. And it's sealed off. We don't really have access to it because it's belongs to the court. Anyway, we had a steam pipe in there that feeds one of the radiators that sprung a leak and leaked steam in there for, we have no idea how long but all the plaster and everything is peeling off. There's mold everywhere and pretty much everything that was stored in there is destroyed.
Yeah.
It's gonna have to be disposed of.
It was, does doorless woman and work.
Yeah, we could barely get the door open.
Yeah.
So it's a, that's one of those rooms that we rarely have ever go into, so.
I guess we'll have to have, we could check them more.
Yeah. Check more more frequently, I guess. So anyway, it's gonna be an unplanned expense.
Anyway, the carpets we've been, we've had on the back burner for two years now.
Yeah.
Yes.
So let's move those to the front burner. Um, I think we got the original quote from McGraw's.
Right.
They've always been real good to us, so.
Yeah, maybe just revisit with them and say, and give a heads up to both departments that try and get something scheduled to get that completed.
Right.
Probably see the bids first, I mean.
I'd have to dig them out.
Yeah.
I'm sure they would come in and give us another bid too. I don't think it was that much.
No.
They did real good about doing offices for us.
Yes. And they've been working at our I don't wanna see partners too.
John, you wanna go ahead and contact McGraw's?
Absolutely.
Did the um H vac system out of the DHS, has that been taken care of? That was on.
I believe so.
Okay.
Was that a Clayton thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did that one.
Okay.
The roof and the door that.
And I think they did, they did the, the back door's been done.
They just need to do the concrete step.
We need to do the concrete step and then that back wall needs to be retained.
Okay, I just didn't see anything on the bills that we had paid, so I didn't know if that was all good to go out there.
Few listens, but way better than what it was.
Okay.
It's no longer remaining in the back door.
We've got about three minutes. You wanna talk about the senior? Get your ladder.
I can't talk that fast.
There's a baby. Good. Okay, I've got nine fifteens. Need a motion to open the budget hearing.
So moved.
Yeah, second.
Favor?
Aight.
Budget hearing is now open.
Okay, I'm gonna address anybody that has questions first, just kind of let you know how we get to this process. This whole budget process starts in December where we send reports to all the department heads with every single line item of basically what they've spent so far this year. So they have the option at that time to reestimate whether it be lower or higher that line item and then put in what they're requesting for next year. Once we get all of those back, everything goes into the financial software and then the board of supervisors start meeting with all the department heads. We go through line item by line item of everything. I'm gonna guess over a hundred pages.
Oh.
Inexorable.
My book is.
Of ledger numbers that we go through, um. Lot of, the department heads are very good, if they're not using it, they get rid of it, they can expend down. Sometimes there's projects that need to come back up, just like everybody else, the utilities, phone bills, things like that. A lot of times those are on the rise. Once we get through all of that, which we're usually done by that, with that in January, um, my staff and I take all those figures, whether it be revenues, expenditures, we put them into our financial software and we figure out what we got for revenues, what we got for expenditures and the difference of what we need in tax asking. Okay? So this year with the tax asking, um, our general basic levy is um stayed the same. Our rural supplement went up a point one eight, four, nine, four. And our rural basic went down point zero, one, nine, five, eight, zero. So it's a total tax asking increase of point one, six, five, four, which amounts to four hundred and fifty one thousand dollars and some change. If you take that and divide it by the parcels, it's right around twenty dollars a parcel of an increase for our property owners. The board worked hard on um going through everything, cutting where we could. And so I just wanted to let folks know how we got to that process. Ultimately, I put the pieces together. It's the board of supervisors' decision on how things work. A couple other things I want to discuss is a couple weeks ago, when we had our proposed property tax hearing, there was quite concern over a half a million dollars that was budgeted for capital projects. I was unaware where this came from, so I had to do some research. So where that, it was posted on social media, but what that money is, is it's ARPA funds. It's not tax asking. We are required by the federal government to expend these funds that we received two years ago by the end of twenty twenty six. That's what that funding is. It is not tax asking, so please don't think we're asking for a half a million dollars in taxes for um capital projects, because we are not. Okay, that was my one concern. Um, there was also a posting regarding some fund balances and a lot, lot of them showed a negative fund balance. I don't know where that came from and also some of these funds that they're showing figures in, we don't even have that fund, so I, I don't know. So if you do have questions, please contact me regarding some of this stuff. I will do my best to try and figure it out and explain what's going on. Is there any questions regarding the process of how we got this into our tax asking?
You mentioned that uh you identified the revenue and expenses, but you didn't say anything about a carryover balance, a fiscal year carryover balance. Is that part of your process?
We have to have a fiscal year carryover balance for grants and secondary roads because Steve doesn't get his, he doesn't get funded until October without a carryover balance of some sort.
Hmm.
We have.
That would go with any tax asking fund. If we don't have a balance at the end of June thirtieth, we don't pay any bills. That means no employees get paid.
And so how was that, how was that evaluated? Was that part of your evaluation process?
Of what the fund balance is?
Yeah.
No, it's not.
Okay.
So basically what we do is what we take the expenditures and the revenues and the difference between that is what we tax for. Um, on that spreadsheet that I sent you guys a long time ago, so basically for general basic, if every dollar is spent that is in this budget, we will have a carryover of a hundred and eight dollars and seventy one cents.
For the one fund?
General basic.
Yeah.
General supplement, we will have a carryover of thirty seven dollars.
So that's from this budget or is that the entire fund?
This fiscal twenty six budget, the one we're working on.
Yep. So that's not the fund balance, but the fiscal budget.
It would delve into the fund balance.
Yes, ma'am.
Rural basic, if every dollar's expended that um has been requested, we will put on the whole dollar, a hundred dollars and fifty, hundred and fifty three dollars.
So they're bad even, is what you're saying.
Yes. And as far as the fund balance, um, I know that's been a big concern of yours. If you want to not do any tax asking and start extending all of our fund balance, that's up to the board of supervisors. But God forbid, if there's some type of catastrophic event that we need. We do not try and build our fund balance. We try and keep it level. Our fund balance will increase, excuse me, if all the expenditures are not used. So like, for example, I'm gonna say my department, if I ask for, I'm gonna spend forty five thousand dollars and I only spend thirty five, that ten grand goes in to the fund balance. So we're not trying to, I'm not trying to build a fund balance for the county.
No, I wouldn't say that.
Okay, well, yeah, you've claimed that our fund balance is too high. Completely up to you guys if you guys wanna work it down. That's not my decision. That's up to you.
One of the things that we have to concern ourselves with is fund balances. For instance, we have a federal project that's funded through a grant. That is a reimbursable grant. It's not one that they ongoing pay. So if Brian's got a bridge and they're funding it, we have to pay for that ahead of time, so we have to utilize those fund balances until we get reimbursed back. And that's can be really significant, in the millions.
How much is that project and how much would we request reimbursement for?
It depends on which project you're, which ones you're talking. But the prime example that would work out is the repairs on the Taylor Ford bridge. And that is reimbursed eighty, twenty. And so if you're looking at a two million dollar project, there's four hundred thousand. Now, some of that four hundred thousand becomes uh your engineering administration costs and then I can match it in with the state grants too. But I can't use federal grants to match federal grants.
Mm hmm. Well, thank you, Chris, for the explanation.
You're welcome.
Hey, I'm with the budget hearing. Uh, any other questions? From the gallery? Yes, sir.
Yes. I, I got you.
Name, your name and address, please.
Uh, Charlie Tupper, fourth street southwest.
Thank you.
Could you clarify for us? Uh, the assessment went up thirteen dollars, thirteen percent. Could you kind of give us an idea how that relates to property tax?
Um, that would be for next year's taxation, the assessments that just came out.
Just an idea, is it a hundred dollars per thousand or?
I haven't even looked at it because I don't have anything to do with assessment.
Well, I thought maybe because some of it rolled over into the county, right?
What?
I mean, you do have ag, ag assessments.
What the assessments would do, so like when I do valuations in the fall, that's how we figure, we take the assessed value and then we, the state gives us the rollback um any other credits and we put it all together. That's where your assessed values will come in. Assessed values come completely from the Department of Revenue and it's based off of market value. We don't determine, well, the assessor, I should say, because I don't do assessed values. He, those aren't figures he comes up with. That all comes from the state. Will that have an effect on property taxes? One hundred percent, because if values are going up, then that means more money we could tax for, which means that we could take levies down. So like right now, whenever our levy is at, the three point one eight.
If I could just interrupt for a moment, I'm not knowledgeable on all the terms. I'm just trying to get an idea how much it might go up. I go to all, all the board meetings and everybody's upset about the assessment going up, but nobody can tell us or the people there.
I don't, yeah, I don't know.
Because there's no way to know.
I don't, I don't do the assessments, so I can't answer that.
Yeah.
Well, somebody comes around at the houses and says.
That would be the assessors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that not your office or?
No, that is not.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Okay, second point here.
I could add one thing.
Yeah.
The assessed value has a piece of your taxation, but it's actually under taxable value. Because after all, rollbacks, any veterans credit.
That's why I'm trying to get that version if we.
Yeah, that comes down.
The last time I was here, I asked about COVID funds and I was told there aren't any. Isn't ARPA part of that COVID?
We have not got any ARPA funds for two years.
Oh. I, I thought I heard you say in the beginning.
We have money to spend from ARPA funds. We received two payments. The last payment received was two years ago.
Okay, was it?
But we have until twenty twenty six to spend those.
Not trying to be difficult. Is part of that COVID funding? The ARPA money that you got?
I believe originally that started with the funding from the federal government is COVID funding.
Okay.
I believe so.
Alright, problem. The courthouse. We pay property tax on the courthouse?
No.
Okay.
The county does pay property taxes on the county farm because we write that out and we make an income off of that.
Okay.
If we make an income off the property, then the county has to pay tax.
Okay, now I'm back to my real question. This is for the school board, but I just wanna see how all this money rolls around in the city. They have a, a tax levy on property for six million, six hundred thousand dollars. Is that part of that for you guys?
Absolutely not.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
We don't like to pay any funds. We don't get any or school.
Oh. Very good, thank you.
Any other questions? What do you got any insights for us back there?
Well, bud.
Yeah. Yeah, I got my assessor notice also and I went up fourteen percent. My fifty year old house.
But at the same point in time, we don't know what the state's gonna do with rollbacks. I mean, they could roll that back by and we're only allowed two percent growth anyway. So three percent, I think. Uh, no, we're.
There's no other comments. I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
Hearing is now closed. Got about five minutes.
You want to approve the budget as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
Give a second. Second.
I would like a roll call on that, please.
Curtsai.
Wee Lan Na.
Vogel I, we don't have time to go back through that budget gate. Then you're late, then it happens, then we don't get funds.
And I really wish if you had some concerns. And I really wish if you had some concerns regarding that, all these months we've worked on that. If you would have asked, I would have tried to explain things, if you wanted to cut something, that should have been done before the proposed tax notice hearing was ever done.
I think we talked about cutting the carryover balance a few times.
Then you should have cut the expenditure balance, the expenditures, that's how you cut the carryover, you can't just go in. And say, I'm gonna take ten percent out of my carryover, then where where you can put it?
The other part of that is if we don't have carryover for like, I know that the parking lot here in the front, when that water line went out. Was done because there was a carryover balance, we didn't have to borrow money, I mean, would you rather borrow money and pay interest on it?
Oh, we got notices from our auditor saying that we are, our carryover balances were too out.
From what auditor?
Uh, state auditor, I believe, I mean, I.
We don't have a state, we don't have the state auditor come in and audit our books.
Okay. Well.
Know where you're getting this information, I'd be more than happy to take a look at it.
Okay, I T R mentioned it as well.
Oh, yeah, they're reliable.
I wouldn't go off, I would go off the Department of Management website, because that's where all the information, the true information is. Um, we do have our fiscal audit from last year, I have a big old binder, if you would like to take a look at that. Be hired, partner and company to come in and do our audit. Would like to take a look at that, I would be more than happy to give you a copy of it.
Sounds good.
I've got uh, I think twenty nine, I've got one minute.
I think the paper said it started at nine thirty, that's why we came in. At ninety two and really, sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine, you were here on time.
It started at nine fifteen.
It's a bid opening now.
Oh, I see, I see my piece, thank you.
Don't amend that uh, here's a public hearing, I need a motion to open it. Favor? I did get Amber.
So, I originally had proposed um three different institutions within the ordinance to get them updated. Um, I guess I will just note, so this very first one. Um, was recommended that I reach out to the county attorney to get some guidance on that. Um, I reached out, they are extremely busy and I have not had confirmation on that, so we'll just kind of veto this one. For now, if that works for you guys.
So is that different than from what we published?
I think you just published. I think you just.
And fees. And let me pull it up.
Okay.
So I know for sure.
Fire one is the one for fees, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so basically with this, um, you guys had approved, approved Amber to proceed a few weeks ago, then Amber and I discovered that. It needed to have a public hearing. So that's why we're here. So it's, you've seen it before. So it was assessed, what we published, because what was approved the last time was the accessory building, uh, these accessory buildings.
Yep.
And then the uh. Had that table in it too, Amber.
And then this.
Yes. That's what was published.
Yep, so just these two, I just wanted to clarify, since we had touched on this one, I wanted to just say. State that I don't have confirmation from county attorney, so we'll just kind of detail that one. But yes, if I could just get approval for the accessory buildings, um, so then I need something that is pressed off in. Yellow there in the middle, um, will be replaced with the folded item. Just to simplify.
Yes, for the audience sake, you want to explain what the differences?
Um, sure, so basically what we're doing is we're just removing the thirty percent of the required rear yard for an accessory structure. And also removing the eighteen feet um with. Equipment, I mean boats, RVs, that kind of stuff, um, gradually getting larger. Um, with today's industry, um, we're just looking to accommodate that a little bit more and reason it to the twenty eight. And then just to in line with the accessory building revisement. Um, there's two items notated in red for accessory buildings. Usually that would be transitioning to that twenty eight feet. Um, and that is in the R one residential, R two residential. And then we've got one more over here for the R three residential.
Think that'll be welcomed by a lot of residents.
Yeah, it makes it a lot easier, it's. Yeah.
Do we have, do you have any questions on that, Mike?
No, not at all. Anybody in the audience have questions?
Now's the time to ask. There's no questions, I'll take a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Favor? Thank you, Amber.
Thank you.
And then a motion to approve the first reading and this will also have to have a second reading and a third reading and you guys. Set those dates a couple of weeks ago, so the second reading will be April fourteenth at nine fifteen.
Make the motion that we approve the first reading. And set the second and third readings.
Can we waive the second inter-reading?
Hey, I don't know.
I'll second your motion.
There's nothing shattering about this. All in favor? Roll call on the internet. Okay, next on the agenda, we'll turn the lawn care bids.
Okay.
Everybody's got a bid sheet there.
All right. We received five bids. And this is for mowing at the human services food pantry building and mowing at the public health and emergency services building. Uh, first bid we received from J C's Lawn Care. And for the human services food pantry, it was twenty five dollars per time. Public health E O C thirty dollars. Next one looks like it's from McGill Outdoors. Uh, human services forty. E O C. I can't read the last name. It starts with a K.
Boy, that's a tough one.
He's got a following, we'll have to figure it out.
If he gets the bid on this column. And it's gonna go with Mark. Okay, uh, human services food pantry was thirty. And E O C was thirty. Uh, Gina Lawn Raisers, Great Rangers. Uh, food pantry forty, E O C forty. B M V landscaping and lawn care.
B M B, you said?
Yes. Uh, human services food pantry thirty five, public health, E O C thirty five.
Looks like uh, J C's. Is low bidder at twenty five dollars for the services and thirty dollars for the E O C.
Make the motion when we approve that uh, J C's take care of the lawn care.
Before I second it, do we have, did they say they have proof of insurance?
Um, they will have to provide that before any contract can be signed.
Favor?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Hi, thank you. Thanks for all of our participants. I'm very familiar, it's very small postage stamps uh. At each of those properties, but it does require somebody to kind of mow it. If I can get a nice find from the city, we don't want that. Find far exceeds whatever the cost is to mow it. Okay, next uh. Don, we'll go to senior center consultant changes.
So, when they did the back. Even. My direction for over there, so.
Oh, yeah, he's.
Okay, yeah, when they did that back east part. From the door.
South.
South, thank you.
South facing, but it's easy.
They did um. They like spray foamed it or whatever they call that. Like art seal. So they did that, um, what he is suggesting, because there's whoop. What was happening with the water was going under the building. Because there was holes in the concrete block, I'm gonna go center box, so. And so what the people did when they retracted it, they just put the flashing over top of that. So what China's proposing is to take that flashing off and to do this, to match what's already been done. And then also underneath the. Windows at the, on the shysters room, to put the spray foam there also.
And which one's the shysters?
It's the one with the carpet.
When you first walk in and turn to the right.
Okay.
Yeah, it has the pool samples in it.
Yes.
So, and he is proposing, um, it would be. To do all three of those spots, it would be eight ninety five times three. You're the mathematician. Two thousand six hundred eighty five.
Two thousand six eighty five, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, there's also some other doors that he had.
These are the ones with the rusted doors and rusted door frames.
Yes. I don't know if he wanted to replace them or not.
My recommendation be to do it, to do it right and get it done. We've done, we've done better than four times in three years. Despite these.
Yeah.
And since we've already got a contractor there, I would like to get it done. We don't have to worry about that building for a long.
Do you want to?
That's my recommendation.
I should ask him for pricing on that, I guess.
We already got it on.
Okay, thanks for.
So what I'm wondering, how, where do you want to pull the funds from, do you want to pull it from capital projects or do you want to pull up?
We originally said we're gonna do the senior center with ARPA funds.
Correct.
And I would just soon continue doing that.
Okay. So this was three doors?
Yeah.
Four.
Four. Estimate.
Uh, they're all kind of.
So.
The whole total is fifteen thousand, thirty eight dollars and fifty four cents. We have to deduct that spray foam figure I just gave you of the twenty.
Well, if we're just gonna do the whole thing, then.
And then the whole thing would be fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, thirty eight fifty four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there was a. Subtraction on this bid, bid sheet also of five hundred and seventy nine dollars and fifty one cents.
Okay, so what, you guys, if you're gonna approve it, then approve in the motion, decide where, if you're taking it from capital projects or. Additional ARPA, ARPA funds, I will keep this, but give this to Anne with the original bid. And then once we get the invoice from some project, projects completed, we'll just double check of everything.
Yeah.
I need a motion to. Proceed with this and do our book.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Yeah.
Okay, next I have on here is request for proposal, request for bidders, auditor reports and proposed bids. I must be missing one.
Yeah, the complaint I'm hearing is that they're not, they're not getting a lot of information from the newspaper, a lot of folks don't uh, actually subscribe to the newspapers or. Actually purchase a hard copy of the newspaper, a lot of folks aren't getting the information. But they're requesting that we put the information on our website, request for proposals and request for bidders and auditor reports and proposed budgets. All this, just just kind of put it out there and let people know what has gone.
It is out there.
What auditor reports are you looking for?
Uh, any in general, I mean, if you, if somebody asks for an auditor's report, why not put it up if you have?
Are you looking for revenues, are you looking for just expenditures, fund balances, like the monthly reports? That was just presented. I mean, I could bring a hundred different types of reports.
Yeah, I guess my point was, if we're gonna email it out, why not just put it on the website?
I don't email anything out.
Okay.
But if there's something specific you would like on. The website, you know, let me know what type of report or which report you're looking at, what report is being requested.
Sure.
And we can do that.
We don't even have a spot for request for proposal on our website.
Yeah, we do.
Where's it at? Thank you.
And then she puts it on the page, request for proposals.
Wow, that's great.
Gee, that's good educated, I like this.
But, no, I don't see any other spots, any request for proposal, I don't see anything about these ambulance service.
Well, we wouldn't put a request for proposal, proposal out there unless we were actually requesting it.
Yeah.
Right. And then we have um, a previous questioner out here, from the board supervisors.
So like, for example, when we do an R F P for. And then I'll honestly, that's the only one I ever recall doing for our audit firm. Those are sent out. To any audit firm that I can think of, I reach out to other counties, what they have, those are sent out, they're put on the website. At least I know that's the process when we're doing it for an audit.
What I see here is the previous fiscal year budget and uh.
Cause that's the fiscal.
Is that the most recent version?
That would be twenty four, twenty five.
That's the budget we're in right now.
Do you mind looking, Mama? Yeah, that doesn't really give a detailed report, that looks like the thing that we send to D O L.
No, it's what we download from the D O L.
Right.
That's what, that is what we're required by Iowa code to put out.
Oh, absolutely, that's not doubting what you're doing, this is following Iowa code. I think folks would like to see what the expenditures are so far this year.
So would you like me to post the hundred and some page report somewhere, is that what you're? Asking, I I don't know, because every, because every single expenditure that is approved, like what you guys approved today, the two hundred and twenty some, whatever it was.
After the fact, sure.
What do you mean after the fact?
After we approve it, you you put that on the website.
It it's in the minutes, which goes on the website, which also goes to the newspaper.
But that for the purpose, I guess is what I'm saying.
Are you requesting that these be?
You want something like that out there?
Please be. Publicished before the expect, the, okay, so I'm gonna say, for example, um, I need to order. Some paper, some file folders and some pins, so I need to. Get approval from you guys before that and put it out to the public before we make the purchase?
And I guess maybe if people actually got the newspaper, we could keep another newspaper alive. Since we've lost two other ones in the county and we're down to one. I went to the library and made it for free.
I think folks are kind of looking for this, the proposed budgets. Do you want me to actually list?
This is one or fifty or how many?
Well. I would say about eight, suppose.
Just curious.
Okay. But they're, they're looking for to see what the expenditures have been over the year. Reports like this.
Okay, that's no good.
So every month I've seen you generate these and send them to the.
No, I do not, that's the budget worksheet. Um, there's much, there's so many different reports, Keith, and this is where the confusion is happening. Every month, each department gets their expenditure and revenue report. So is it something like that that you're looking?
I think that'd be useful, especially to determine, you know, what remains of their fiscal budget.
Okay, so then here's another thing, and I mean, it can always be changed. Every department has been in charge of. Their own website page.
That's how it's supposed to be.
So are, is the auditor supposed to upload these for like on my page, on the main page? Or is it going to be up to the department heads once they receive their monthly report to upload them to the website?
Great question. Would you like to do it?
No, we have not actually. And I don't know how more transparent we can be. Because it's just. It's almost like. You feel we're hiding something. I'm not hiding anything.
I don't. I think at all. I think it's.
It's only that.
Information to the public.
Well, one hundred, what more do you want?
I'm thinking.
There has never been one question to brought to my office. Regarding this, if someone calls me and says, hey, can I get a monthly report? One hundred percent. But it's this hidden.
If you're already generating these monthly reports, why not just put those on the website?
If you would like to direct the department heads, your department heads to do that, that is your decision.
Only takes three of us.
I mean, that's up to you guys. That's not up to me. To when these reports get emailed out to tell the department.
You just said you don't email reports. And I'm getting a little confused here.
We email them to the.
I email them to the department. I do not email them. I apologize.
Okay.
Amanda runs all the monthly reports and she emails them to the department.
Okay.
If.
And you're welcome to look at it if you want.
Oh, yeah. I mean, if that's up to you guys, if you would like the department heads to do that.
I mean, if you're already running them, why not just have the I T just put them up on the website?
It is the department's responsibility to run their own page. I T, I T does not.
Is there anyone who wouldn't do this? Okay.
No. It's never been brought up ahead, brought before us before. I've never had this question.
For a whole total of eight people.
I think there's a cost benefit. Maybe you have to look at yours about how much time and effort it's going to have to go into uploading these.
On what, and it's a copy paste index though.
Well, you're a lot more.
No, it's not a copy and paste.
You index it, you copy and paste the files over.
No, that's not, well, that's not the way it does, works when I run my page, but maybe it's something different.
And that's not the way it worked when I. Do the budgets.
That's your basic.
If anybody asks questions, to contact any of the three of us or go to the auditor's office and she can show you whatever they're looking for. But out of a population base of twenty thousand plus people. And we only have eight people inquiring, I don't think this is a good payback.
Looks like good minimum number for the number of people that we need to ask for the.
I'd have to think about that, Keith.
Sure. That's fair.
I've been a supervisor for over two years. How many times have I had a question about that? I think. I'm going to editorialize. I think you're stirring things. To support your agenda. And to make you look like a hero and I don't appreciate it. So that's just my personal view.
Then one other thing to remember, um, like for example, I'm just going to talk about my report. It also has, and Anne just reminded me of this. It has what we pay in benefits, like health insurance information.
Obviously, we'd want to limit HIPAA and anything else restricted.
So then, then you have to rejuvenate the report or edit the report. Uh, I mean, but that could be something to keep in consideration.
Yeah, and I actually see some of that HIPAA violation going on at Facebook, on Facebook. His employee benefits were posted on those, but those, which is just going to throw that one out there.
Were names identified?
Names are not identified in those monthly reports.
Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion on this topic?
Doesn't sound like I'm going to get a two-thirds vote, so we hold a recommendation.
I did. Oh, shoot, I closed it. Um. So like, for example, when we set, put stuff up for bed, like whether it be like the cell of the bridge we just had. Or the lawn care, that is out on the website. So I, I didn't know.
Yeah, thanks, sir. I appreciate that.
Okay, next on the agenda is discuss the purchase of a motor grader with the secondary roads department.
Your name. Um, it with motor graders in today's world, there's really only two out there, that's John Deere and Caterpillar. And we've gotten bid proposals and both of them are here. Uh, I did share what I was originally sent and I'll introduce Justin Locker.
Good morning.
From Murphy County and Mark Herman from Altor First.
You're welcome to come up too. You don't want to sit there.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, um. You saw that I sent out what the original submitted and uh Justin's. Gonna um has had some opportunities to make some changes. One of the things that they submitted in their proposal was um for they would change the oil for three years.
That was on the information that you. Yes, you had, you just.
Yep.
Handwritten items, and that's what I sent to the board supervisors. Thank you.
So you're breaking my heart. You're really going to give me eighty-five thousand for trading?
Well, so actually, yes. So originally, we had, uh, we're not a cat dealer. Uh, John Deere is our bread and butter. So anyway. Ultimately, originally, we had a uh, the majority of that equipment that we have, we end up. Wholesaleing off or finding like an, and buyer, maybe a cat dealer, it might be, you know, somebody somewhere else that has a market for that, but ultimately, so we. Uh, our used equipment team had found eighty-five thousand, five hundred dollars is what it guaranteed. I told Brian, as long as the machine. Comes in with less than fifteen hundred dollars more than what it currently has on it. We could guarantee that. So yes, eighty-five-five uh is what we're up for a trade now on that. Yeah.
Like the final. Bottom line is three hundred and ninety thousand.
That's correct, yes.
It looks like that's a different from, difference from the cat bid uh of three thousand two fifty, Chris.
Yes, I got a question. How can you turn in a quote, my quote, and then stand up here and give a quote out more than you on the trade? You like your law more bid you just opened up, they can come in and give you another quote.
They could have actually.
And, okay.
Fine. Yeah, would, would you like to put in another, another quote or?
It's not right. Been thirty-three years, I've been to a lot of bid openings and we don't open, handle, contest and. Come back and get one nice quote and do another quote.
These are bid proposals. Yeah, if you really get into the state code, it is set up to negotiate purchases.
Could you like some more times?
Yeah, I'd advise that they like to negotiate next week if I could.
About two weeks.
Yeah, that's fine.
Next week's names.
Okay.
Both Alex and I are. At Schaumburg, Illinois.
I, I think. In support of what Brian's saying about the. Request for proposals, when you're going to spend almost a half a million dollars on a piece of equipment, you're trying to get it to the best price you can. And. Uh. This won't be the first or last motor grader we buy. Cause we're on a normal replacement cycle. And. We appreciate anybody that's going to give us a proposal and a bid.
And if Mark would like two weeks, that, there's no rush for us.
Did I actually? Just, I'll jump in here for one second. Um, this, we were low bid, correct? Is that correct?
Originally.
As you said, we're three thousand dollars.
I mean, originally, the Caterpillar was less.
As far as the purchase price goes though, because there's a purchase price and there's a trade in.
Overall.
So what was the, what was the purchase number if I, I know we were four seventy-five, five.
Yeah, there. The purchase price was a little bit.
Yeah, the, the ori, the original selling price they listed for the cat is four eighty-two fifty-three.
Four eighty-two fifty-three. So yeah, so I guess technically, you know, that was a little bid. We just happened to have. Additional funds that we were able to, you know, find a buyer for that motor grader, which, you know, we had two choices. You could either use it as profit. And still offer the trade allowance if we're able to capture the trade or turn on and pass it on to you guys, so. But the relationship we have, I figured I'd keep more of the funds in you guys' pocket, not like. Anybody's looking for extra funds anywhere, so. Everybody's looking for extra. And a couple of things to point out too, as far as specs go, um, our machine is built in Davenport, Iowa, made in USA, which is on the front page of the spec sheet there. I think we made all the specs as far as that goes, um. I mean, I guess, yes, there could always be time to renegotiate. We can come back and we can go back and forth and do that if we. Want to, like I said, I've, I'm confident we made all the specs for the proposal.
So your machine's built in Brazil?
That is correct. It's for the circle you guys have asked for.
We called for the premium circle, which we've got about three of them out there right now, and if I back off of that. There would be some real concerns out there. The premium circle is basically the same setup they use for hydraulic excavator, for the circle on those. Far heavier than what the old circles were, and they also have far more power. So one of the big advantages to the premium circle was when the motor grader operators get down the ditch, they can dig that board. Help lift their machine and get it out of the ditch. But I'm not pulling as many vehicles out of the ditch.
And that's, I know one thing that Brian looks at, I look at it too, also from the standpoint of, um, you know, this isn't something that you talked about just during the winter, but this is, as you talked about, is over the ten to twelve years you own the machine. With our premium circle, it is an enclosed, which I'm not going to bore you guys with the details of all of it, but it's an enclosed circle. I think Caterpillar now offers something similar to it, but. Uh, it's reduced wear parts. It's less maintenance, you know, and you got your upfront purchase price, and of course you have what does it cost us to own and maintain this machine for ten, twelve? Years or however long you keep it in your fleet. The premium circle is something that we're very proud of that John Deere brought to market back in twenty nineteen. It was a big uh selling point, you know, for. Private and public, uh, but, um, you know, when you look at fixed budgets, you know, it's something where they really pushed it for the torque, the speed, but then also too, the. The maintenance or lack of, expect of it over the, the time on there. So that is something that again, like I said, that was in the spec. We obviously have. That I know that they do now too as well, um. And then I guess one other thing too that we, excuse me, it wasn't in the spec, but something that we did have as a credit, you know, you can certainly take it out. Well, let me rephrase that. You can't, because it's a credit program that we have, but we're covering, talked about maintenance costs too. Uh. I would assume Caterpillar is somewhere five hundred dollar scheduled maintenance is, and you have five hundred thousand, fifteen, two thousand and so on. Um, we are actually covering the parts, the labor. Uh, all the fluids, everything associated with the first two thousand hours worth of services on that machine. So essentially, if you were to take delivery of our machine, uh, just figure for the next two years on that, you're only going to have to pay somebody to run it and put fuel on it.
Brian, how many? Average hours does a motor grader get per year?
It really depends on the winter. That's the issue we've been in. We've been getting mild winters. So we're really looking at six hundred, seven hundred hours per year is what these machines have been putting on them.
It's heavy weather.
And I'm up over then. Nine hundred and fifty a thousand hours is. Is what you're getting on them at that point in time. Now, we also tried to give some preference to the operator. This is Brian Quinn that's running this machine. He's been running the cat. He would sooner stay in the cat.
I just understand the USA.
Yeah, that's another fact. That's a, that's a factor in there too.
Okay, so. Our recommendation is to come back in two weeks and review proposals one more time.
We have to do that?
I think it's only fair. They had the opportunity to. Refigure their. Proposal. I think we should offer the same thing to cats.
It was great for you. It was ready for you.
Well, it might be better price for us. Still, you know, you're looking at almost half a million dollars. I mean, that's a significant purchase.
But he did come in with the lowest bid. I mean, as far as. Upfront without even figuring the other.
Did I, again, obviously now I'm going to do sales, which is what we're sort of here to do. Um, if the machine. Bids were to come back and let's say it's either similar or less money, if cat was in us, with the uh, with the fact that the machine. Again, one of the specs that was on there is that it be built in the United States. Is that something that you guys would still take that into consideration? And again, I'm only asking that question.
Very important. And that's why it was on the proposal, heard about for proposals.
Yeah, but it wasn't possible for us to get the premium circle on a machine made, built in the US.
Well, that's not my problem, no.
And my question was, why can't they build the circle and send it in and put it on a machine built? In Arkansas, because they do make virtually identical machines in Arkansas.
But I, I mean, we've, we, we all, we opened up the bids to lawn care, to the bridges. I mean, if there's.
Okay.
Back and forth.
Yeah, I was going to say, because we have the sealed bids and then on the bridge and we have people bid.
Yeah.
Against each other.
Yeah.
We sold them. And if we had longer people in here, they would have been able to. Bid against each other. No, you're going to need too much.
Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying, Angel.
Okay, so revealing, twisting stuff, we'll run over and over again.
You guys.
Hi, brother Wade, my guest.
It's just a little bit more in depth than a. Hundred dollar bid for this or a hundred dollar bid, this is fine. Plus, I think you need to at least look at. But my opinion has. I know this attacks the over.
You have something to say, sir?
I did have a comment, so. Please, um, regarding uh, John, this, I assume is the machine that would do like the rolling rolls to your brain, is?
The, the rock roads, yes.
Yeah, um, with John Deere's repair policies, if that machine breaks down in a blizzard. Who fixes it? If John Deere can.
May I answer? Oh, we would fix it.
You would fix it, but what if you're busy and you can't get somebody out? Is there any provision for somebody else to fix it? Cause I know Deere has long had this policy of only John Deere.
Yeah.
Represent us.
Yeah, that's a good question. Um. We have. A strong relationship with Buchanan County with uh. As far as the equipment needs go, we also have a strong relationship with guys in the shop, Dustin, Tom, those guys, um, operators, uh. Most of them we know by a first name basis and they all. Contact information for everybody on there. So. So more directly answer your question, all of what we've done in the past is if, like, for example, this is, our proposal essentially covers everything for the. It's a comprehensive warranty for seven years, seven thousand dollars. Under normal circumstances and a perfect world, if we could get out there, we'll make the repairs. If we couldn't, generally what happens is they have the. Um, all of the manuals and the diagnostic software to. Make repairs. If they're able to, a lot of times we'll walk them through it. Like I said, we'll talk to the guys in the shop and they'll say, hey. You know, this is leaking or we got this, whatever. Should I continue to move it? We need to get it on a truck. What do we do here? And, you know, like I said, our, our goal, especially when it's considered to be. You know, you're talking about it in a blizzard, you're talking about a snowstorm, whatever, you know, um. You know, they uh. You know, it's, it's public safety, it's public priority at this point, you know, you keep your roads clear, you could have emergencies. You know, it's, it's public safety, it's public priority at this point. You know, you keep your roads clear. You could have emergency services. You could have, you know, a fire, whatever. So anyway, ultimately, we're not going to withhold information, say, sorry, too bad. You're just out of luck until we can get to you, pal. You know, we got, I mean, the way that we're gonna handle it is professionally and think of. Um, you know, the best solution. And in that case, it would be to work with the guys in the shop to talk through, I mean, in the past. Uh, Brian has highlighted how we've had deliveries for, and it's been a while since we've had any kind of winters. Obviously, they've been pretty mild. Uh, but you know, in the past, we've delivered parts and come out on Sundays.
Christmas Day, I remember getting parts one day.
You know, so our, our commitment is to.
And that's true at Cat or Deer. Yeah, if I need parts, I gotta be able to get parts.
Like you said, to answer your question directly, I mean, we're gonna work through it and, you know, if we need to then handle internally warranties and all that sort of stuff, we'll take care of it, not at the. You know, not at the expense of somebody else's time and a consideration on it, so.
Okay, appreciate the question.
Oh, any more discussion on the. It's a motor grader. A motion to give Brian direction.
Think we're gonna sit on this discussion and solve it in two weeks.
Okay.
Take the motion on the table, this discussion for two weeks.
Second. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you.
Battery, I have a pencil sharpener here.
It's perfect. All right, thank you guys. Appreciate it. Yep.
Okay, I'd now like to be able to open up for public comment.
Please remember to group, on this remain and it's three minutes and we really can't. Especially when you went to Iowa. Um, I guess in regards to the carryover. From a business standpoint, you guys are keeping it level. I don't see any reason for decreasing it and increasing times of uh, the inflation. And the uncertainty of trying to get some of these projects that uh, have been let go for several years. There's lots of things that have been let go for several years. I guess my big thing is we need that carryover. Um, whatever it is, because if it is staying the same, that's what we as a business. Maintains well, is we have to have a certain amount of operating capital available to us in case of emergency. Before the funds come in for the next trial or whatever. We have to have that carryover. That's just a healthy business practice. Um, the other thing that I would really like to see in Buchanan County is a comprehensive plan on some of these. Maintenance issues that keep coming up. And I understand that there's, the room upstairs is totally off the wall. I. Understand that. That is something that you cannot plan for. But again, um, at least you have some art of funds that are gonna be available, hopefully, and maybe insurance will help take care of that, which is. You know, kudos to you guys for having an insurance policy that will handle some of that and, and, and a reasonable. Ten thousand dollars is a reasonable deductible at this, in this day and age. Um, because insurance is so expensive. If you gone and you lost it, it would be cost, cost proof. Um, but you know, just have a maintenance. You know, it's gonna take some time to put that maintenance plan together, but just to have that plan. So not only you three sitting up there, but the next three, the following three, at least have an idea of, this is what's been done. This is how we've looked at things and, and this is what's coming up. It's just a, a, a business plan that I write, this is part of the plan that I write so that place in Buchanan County.
Right, to address that a little bit. We complain regularly to our legislators, cause I'm basically funded for one bridge a year. I have two hundred and sixty three bridges. Like pavement is even the same amount of concrete pavement I've got today or payments today. I'm basically funded for two, you could say kind of thinner and cheaper and you could maybe get three. Have two hundred and two miles of payments. So that means we don't have enough money to really two miles a year unless they can. Come up with outside federal grants or other kind of state grants. There's, you could take a long-term plan, but if the funding's not there.
But my long-term maintenance plan had nothing to do with your budget.
Okay.
Mine was maintenance abilities. And that had nothing to do with your maintenance.
Like placing the air conditioners on the sheriffs.
It's just something that, okay, you know, every, every twenty years or however long these are gonna last, we need to be thinking about this for this, rather than. It, it just needs to be in writing. It just needs to have. A comprehensive plan.
And that's one of the reasons we have a maintenance agreement with Recce, works on all mechanical stuff. Try and troubleshoot things before it becomes a problem.
Right.
And some of these things just happen.
Yes.
The automatic door downstairs. Just one day didn't close and we looked and the hinges were broken up. And it would normally, it had operated just perfectly for that last person. And they didn't even touch it, it just.
I understand what you say about a comprehensive maintenance plan and we could have, I mean.
Have to be a lot. It could be. You know, it's, you need, you need to know how long your, how old your units are and where they are and. You need to, you, you need to know, maybe we need to be doing door maintenance and. But so you don't have to run into that. But that doesn't, you know, it's not a hundred percent. Nothing is a hundred percent.
Right.
But if you have something, at least you're, you have.
You're doing great work in a sketch.
Instead of keeping it up here.
This doesn't happen.
Another thing on the fund balances, it's really critical that we have a healthy fund balance. If we were to go and try and bond or anything for anything, you have to have a certain amount of. Funds that are not committed.
You have to have a history of good.
Financial management.
Yes.
Yes.
A lot easier to get bonded, it's a lot easier to get a loan. If your credit score is good.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, Bob Q, Brandon and I, do I need to stand up? Yes, okay. Um, I have a concern and today is just another example of it. Um, between the three of you, you need to do some team building. Um, the environments, the personalities, you know. How do we move Buchanan forward if, if there's infighting amongst the three of you? And there's lack of knowledge that's been brought out today in different times. And so team building, whatever we wanna call it. And, and I'm just gonna point to, to Keith, for an example, I've talked to different employees. That you need to, you need to work on your approach, how you approach people, because you come across like you're trying to find fault with these people. And, and it's, it, it's not a good atmosphere when that's created. And I've worked with all kinds of people. But again, you, you, I know you want a lot of information. I know you wanna learn and that type of thing, but your approach. Um, like I said, I've talked to different people, different employees that feel like you're, you're trying to find them wrong. I mean, people have told me that they don't mind to have positive or positive criticism, but it's like, okay, I got you. And, and you know, that needs to stop. So I don't know if it's team building, whatever you wanna call it, but the environment, the environment since January first here is, is not good. And it's been witnessed by several people in, in the audience. And, you know, we gotta work together if you're gonna move this county forward. And you have to be a team. And I've done team building exercises and, and I know it's, it's helped me in my jobs. Uh, before, so I, hopefully I didn't offend anybody, but.
No, really.
It's, you can, yeah, the tension in here, you can cut it with a knife. So. That's my.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll just, oh, okay.
I just wanted to say, um, regarding all the information that you wanna put on the website, um. I've been a software engineer for over twenty years. I've been a professional website designer and I can definitely guarantee you it is not as simple as copying and pasting. You're looking at a significant time investment if you want it to be remotely presentable or readable. You can't just copy paste it and throw it up there. So that's all I wanted to say about that is that it is not that simple.
A lighter note. Um, has everybody seen that, uh, Lay's potatoes? Is no saying that they will not buy potatoes that were grown on land that had sold.
I haven't seen that at all.
Are they standing good?
They're afraid of what's leaching into the ground and then being sucked up by the potatoes.
It's a national, goes underground.
That's a big company, all those potato chips. Also, if you've ever grown potatoes, if there is glass, those potatoes will grow around them.
Be something where somebody found a wedding ring that was encased inside a potato.
Yes.
Evidently, they had lost it in their garden and the potato grew right around it.
It did grow around it, it, it envelops it.
I want to remind you guys that my office will be closed Wednesday. We have seat election training and Cedar Rapids. And the following Wednesday will be closed because we're going to Nevada for um, our ten X training, which is our election. Nevada, Nevada. Can I? Please.
I'll take you with me. So just want everybody to know I'm gonna be gone Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. I'll still be up. You, you can still reach me by phone. I'm gonna go to the Iowa Rural Service Rural Summit. Um, with economic development, they are paying for my ticket and then I'm paying for, well, the county will pay for that. The room and what, yeah. Yeah, and I hopefully I have some good things to report back to everybody.
Good. Anything else? If not, I will take a, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
We'll probably be discussing.